The April 9th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education is called to order. This meeting is being held in accordance with Section 33-13.15 of the Ohio Revised Code. Mrs. Briner, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Briner, here. Mr. Buckley?
Here.
Ms. Jettling is recorded absent. Mrs. Roberts?
Here.
And Mr. Tuttle?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to welcome everyone to the April 9th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Mentor Exempted Village Board of Education. Prior to this evening, each board member has received for their review and consideration the agenda and materials associated with each agenda item for the board's approval via the district's paperless Board of Education Agenda System, Board Docs. The public can access the agenda through the school districts' website. The agenda is available through the district's website for public viewing the Sunday prior to the board meeting. Board members have the opportunity to call the superintendent and chief financial officer for information concerning agenda items and to request, if necessary, if needed, additional information. There are two places on the agenda when the board entertains comments from the community. The first hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on agenda items only. The second hearing of the public is dedicated to those who wish to address the board on any subject, whether it is an item on the agenda or another issue. When addressing the board, please state your name. Comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your questions to the president. This meeting is being televised on a delayed basis and will be shown on Spectrum Cable, Channel 102.6 in Mentor and Channel 102.5 in Mentor-on-the-Lake. This meeting is also being videotaped and will be shown on our YouTube channel, Cardinal TV Mentor Ohio. Please place your mobile telephones on silent mode during the meeting. By now you know we have an appointment of a treasurer pro tem, and that's Mrs. Briner. Thank you, Mrs. Briner. Next on the agenda, the approval in minutes. Mrs. Briner, please call the roll.
So moved.
Can I second, even though I have to abstain? Put the motion to the floor. I can still second. Okay.
Second. I'm sorry, call the roll, Mrs. Briner.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Abstain.
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
And Ms. Briner, yes.
Next on the agenda, a hearing of the public on agenda items only. Anyone? Hearing none. Mr. Porter, superintendent's report?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. I have the following recommendations listed under the consent agenda and recommend approval of items 6A-1 through 6A-3.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
And Ms. Briner, yes.
Thank you. Mr. President and members of the board, tonight we are recognizing several outstanding students for their achievements. I'd like to begin by inviting Mr. Crowe and Mrs. Briner to the podium to begin the presentations.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Porter. I'm excited to be here this evening to recognize Alex Summers and her outstanding academic and extracurricular accomplishments and community service involvement, all of which led Alex to being selected as the Franklin B. Walter All Scholastic Award winner for Lake County this school year. Alex, would you please join me at the podium? Just a little bit of information about what this award is. The Franklin B. Walter All Scholastic Award was established in 1989 by Ohio's counties' superintendents to recognize students' achievements and promote academic accomplishments. One senior from each county within the state of Ohio receives this award annually. Students must demonstrate outstanding academic achievement, extracurricular, and community activities. Alex's rigorous academic coursework includes multiple AP classes, and she also takes many of our highest-level music classes. Alex is a member of our National Honor Society, is involved in the award-winning Fighting Cardinal Marching Band, and is also the lead in our spring musical, The Most Happy Fellow, where she will be playing Rosabella. And actually, she came just straight from the dress rehearsal today, so in costume. So Alex will receive her award this Thursday at the Franklin B. Walter Awards Luncheon in Columbus. Congratulations, Alex.
And, Mr. President, members of the board, at this time I would like to invite Mr. Casella to join Mrs. Briner at the podium for the athletic award presentations.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Porter. This past winter sports season, several of our student athletes competed at the state level and did so very successfully. The coaches and student athletes represented the city of Mentor and Mentor High School with dignity and excellent sportsmanship in addition to their superior athletic performances. I'd first like to recognize members of our wrestling team. They weren't able to be here tonight, but I wanted to make sure I recognized them. Under the leadership of Coach Lamont of the wrestling program, they were sectional runner-up this year, qualifying eight wrestlers to the districts here in Mentor. Two of our wrestlers placed at the district level, qualifying them for the state tournament. Seniors Nate DeBeau finished fourth at the district and qualified for state, and his brother Connor DeBeau also finished fourth at district and finished eighth at the state tournament. Both of these young men worked hard all season, and their efforts paid off, so I wanted to make sure I was able to congratulate them this evening. Next, I'd like to congratulate and bring up members of our gymnastics team. If head coach Jessica Araps would join me up here, please. Once again, our gymnastics team won the Greater Cleveland Conference, and Coach Araps was named Greater Cleveland Conference Coach of the Year. The cards finished third at the district tournament to advance to this year's state tournament again for, I can't count how many years in a row now. I'm sure she could tell you. At the state tournament, the ladies finished fourth in the state of Ohio, so very proud of that effort. So it was another fine season by our team. So I'd like to bring up members of our gymnastics team, and as I call your name, if you come up and then stay standing here in the front till all members are recognized. Emma Stafford. Now, these young ladies all qualified for the state tournament, but I know she's out there and thinking we forgot about her, but no, we didn't, Kelsey. We had the first state champion in a long time in the sport of gymnastics, and that was Kelsey Morgan, so I asked Kelsey to come forward here, please. Kelsey kind of had a little bit of a rough day at states, but before she had a rough day, she qualified and won the state championship on the balance beam with an overall score of 9.550. And we have a little bit of a treat here. If you look at the monitors, we have her routine, that her state championship routine that we're going to show you on the video. Kelsey's plaque, her state champion plaque, now hangs on the wall outside the athletic office with all of our other state champions, and we congratulate her and the whole gymnastics team on a spectacular season, so thank you, ladies. The final team I want to recognize this evening is our boys bowling team. If Coach Mike Phillips would join me here on stage. This year's boys bowling team were Greater Cleveland Conference champions, with Charlie Ball being named Bowler of the Year and Coach Mike Phillips Coach of the Year in the Greater Cleveland Conference. In the postseason, the boys bowling team finished third at districts, advancing them to the state tournament. In the state tournament, they qualified for the finals, winning their quarterfinal match. However, they lost in the semifinal round but finished third overall in the state of Ohio. Another fine season by our boys bowling team. So I'd like to bring up members of our bowling team. If you've never been to the state bowling tournament, it is a sight to see. There's a lot of excitement down there, and these guys did a fantastic job representing our school and our community down there. You know, Coach Phillips takes a group down, it seems like, every year we're down there representing Mentor High, so congratulations to these young men and their coach on another spectacular season. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Great season. Congratulations to all of our athletes for a great winter sports season. Mr. President and members of the board, finally, I would like to invite Mr. Crowe to the podium again for the last of this evening's student recognitions.
Hello, Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Porter. Tonight I am here to help recognize our students who participate in our career technical education programs. In addition to participating in our programs, our students are also extensively involved in our career technical student organizations, which include DECA, Skills USA, Business Professionals of America, HOSA, Future Health Professionals. Through their participation, students are able to gain work-based learning and gain knowledge about careers and industries that'll guide their decisions post-high school. The students recognized tonight have not only participated but excelled in their chosen program and CTSOs. In talking about the tremendous amount of success that we have had, there were over 80 Career Tech students that qualified for either a state competition or were a finalist in a statewide contest, and that's a pretty tremendous accomplishment. Due to the tremendous amount of success of our students, we have chosen to recognize the students by CTSO event and qualification. We have also created a handout that lists the individual students for members of the audience. I'm going to go ahead and speak about each group, and after I speak about your group, I would ask that students in that group, please come up in the front to receive your certificate and also shake hands with the board members. So, our first group of students are members of our marketing and business administration program. These students participated in a regional DECA competition and qualified for the state competition in Columbus. In addition, I would like to note that Alexic Henig and Caitlin Spiesman qualified to the national competition that'll take place later this month, April 27, in Orlando, Florida, and we wish them good luck. At this point, if the marketing and business administration students would please come up to accept your certificates. Thank you. It was a thing, so. Can the other MBA students please come up here?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
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 Congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
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 You're an awesome kiddo.
Can we please go ahead and have one more round of applause for our MBA students? Really great. Our next group is composed of several CTE programs that participate in the regional Skills USA competition. And in addition, we have our Cisco program that participates in the Business Professionals of America competition. These students all qualified for their state competition, and we congratulate them on their accomplishments. If we can please have all Skills USA and Business Professionals of America competition students come up now to accept your certificate. Thank you. Next, I'd like to congratulate and bring up members of our gymnastics team. If head coach Jessica Araps would join me up here, please. Once again, our gymnastics team won the Greater Cleveland Conference, and Coach Araps was named Greater Cleveland Conference Coach of the Year. The cards finished third at the district tournament to advance to this year's state tournament again for, I can't count how many years in a row now. I'm sure she could tell you. At the state tournament, the ladies finished fourth in the state of Ohio, so very proud of that effort. So it was another fine season by our team. So I'd like to bring up members of our gymnastics team, and as I call your name, if you come up and then stay standing here in the front till all members are recognized. Claire Kood. Allison Fesmer. And Dion Tejada. Now, these young ladies all qualified for the state tournament, but I know she's out there and thinking we forgot about her, but no, we didn't, Kelsey. We had the first state champion in a long time in the sport of gymnastics, and that was Kelsey Morgan, so I asked Kelsey to come forward here, please. Kelsey kind of had a little bit of a rough day at states, but before she had a rough day, she qualified and won the state championship on the balance beam with an overall score of 9.550. And we have a little bit of a treat here. If you look at the monitors, we have her routine, that her state championship routine that we're going to show you on the video. So go ahead, Mrs. Kirby. Congratulations. office with all of our other state champions, and we congratulate her and the whole gymnastics team on a spectacular season, so thank you, ladies. The final team I want to recognize this evening is our boys bowling team. If Coach Mike Phillips would join me here on stage.
Mr. President, members of the board, and Mr. Porter. I've been fortunate to be part of this district for the last nine years, serving a variety of roles in our IT department. I'm excited for the opportunity to step into a leadership role where I can have a greater influence on the technology needs of all of our stakeholders. We have built a strong infrastructure here that is essential for the daily operations of the district. I look forward to not only maintaining but expanding the way that technology can have a greater impact on the learning and teaching here at Menor Schools. Thank you again for this opportunity.
Thank you. This concludes my portion of tonight's agenda.
Next on the agenda, Board of Education report recommendations. We have a service agreement renewal with the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio included with board materials. We need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mary.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
And Ms. Spriner?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, the Legislative Report. Mrs. Bryner?
And we have another law one.
That's fine.
Governor Mike DeWine's budget proposal, House Bill 166, would guarantee each school district received the aggregate amount of state funding it received in fiscal year 2019. It also appropriates an additional $250 million in fiscal year 2020 and $300 million in fiscal year 2021 for student wellness and success initiatives in schools. Schools would receive this additional funding for mental health, counseling, wraparound supports, mentoring, and after-school programs. Each school district would receive funding on a per-pupil basis determined by census poverty data. The per-pupil dollar amounts would range on a sliding scale from $20 to $250 in fiscal year 2020 and $25 to $300 in fiscal year 2021, with districts receiving no less than $25,000 in fiscal year 2020 and $30,000 in fiscal year 2021. Any questions, comments on that?
Just, I wish it were more.
We'll take whatever we can get. Right. This must pass both the House of Representatives and Senate and receive the governor's approval by June 30th to become law. Update on the Cup-Patterson Work Group Releases Simulations. The bipartisan Coalition of School Districts Superintendents and Treasurers led by Representatives Robert R. Cupp from Lima and John Patterson of Jefferson last week released district-by-district simulations for its proposed school funding formula. Preliminary estimates of the plan call for an increase of $400 million in fiscal year 2020 and an additional $320 million in fiscal year 2021. The plan is under consideration in the House Financial Subcommittee on Primary and Secondary Education. Superintendent of Public Instruction Paulo Di Maria recently issued his review and recommendations for academic distress commissions. The content of the report is included as a provision in the biennial budget bill, House Bill 166, which is currently under consideration in the House of Representatives. Meanwhile, several efforts to reform the academic distress commission process are underway. These include House Bill 127, which would prohibit the creation of new academic distress commissions; House Bill 154, which would dissolve all academic distress commissions; repeal the laws regarding distress commissions; and establish a community learning center process for low-performing school buildings and for districts currently subject to a distress commission. Senate Bill 110, which would modify the composition of Lorraine City's Academic Distress Commission, would require evaluations of the commission's CEO and would require the CEO to appear before the school board when requested. Next, recently introduced legislation. House Bill 83, introduced by Rep. Brown, Democrat of Canal Winchester, and Schaefer, Republican of Lancaster, to allow images captured by school bus cameras to be used as corroborating evidence for the offense of failing to stop for a school bus. House Bill 132, introduced by Rep. Don Manning, Republican of New Middletown, to require public and non-public schools to notify each student's parent of the exemptions from immunizations that are required to attend school. House Bill 134, introduced by Rep. Antoni, Republican of Miamisburg, to provide a three-day sales tax holiday for purchases of qualifying Energy Star products. House Bill 135, introduced by Antoni, to provide a three-day sales tax holiday for purchases of less than $100 on school supplies and school instructional materials and for purchases of less than $2,000 on laptops or tablets. House Bill 149, introduced by Rep. Marin, Republican, Monclovia Township, to exempt from property tax the increased value of unimproved land that has been subdivided for residential development for eight years or until construction begins where the land is sold. House Bill 154, introduced by Reps. Joseph A. Miller III, Democrat of Amherst, and Jones, Republican, Freeport, to dissolve all academic distress commissions, to repeal the laws regarding distress commissions, and to establish a community learning center process for low-performing school buildings and for school districts currently subject to a distress commission. House Bill 164, introduced by Rep. Ginter, Republican of Salem, which deals with student religious expression in public schools. House Bill 165, introduced by Reps. Liston, Democrat of Dublin, and Galonsky, Democrat of Akron, to require the adoption of health education standards which may be utilized by public schools. House Bill 166, introduced by Rep. Olz Lager, Republican of Canton, to make appropriations for the state operating budget for fiscal years 2020 and 2021, including the school funding formula. House Bill 169, introduced by Reps. Keller, Republican of Middletown, and Antoni, to require school districts, among others, to cooperate with the federal government in the enforcement of immigration laws and to apply sanctions to noncompliant entities. Senate Bill 102, introduced by Senators Lehner, Republican of Kettering, and Brenner, Republican of Powell, to create the dyslexia screening program that would require public schools to conduct screenings of all children six years old or younger and provide intervention services for those displaying risk factors for dyslexia and to provide parents of identified children with information about dyslexia, certain treatments and services, and to offer services. Senate Bill 104, introduced by Senator Hill, Republican of Zanesville, to revise funding for inter-district open enrollment. Senate Bill 110, introduced by Senator Manning, Republican of North Ridgeville, to modify the composition of Lorraine City's Academic Distress Commission, to require evaluations of the commission's CEO and to require the CEO to appear before the school board when requested. Senate Bill 118, introduced by Senator Rogner, Republican of Hudson, to increase the penalty for assault if the victim is acting as a sports official or the assault is committed in retaliation for the victim's actions as a sports official. Senate Bill 121, introduced by Senators Sykes, Democrat of Akron, and Coonsy, Republican of Hilliard, to require the State Board of Education to develop K-12 health education standards and to revise the law regarding venereal disease education standards and curriculum. Last but not least, Senate Bill 125, introduced by Senators Hodinger, Republican of Newark, and Brenner, to expand the income tax deduction allowed for contributions to Ohio's 529 education savings plans to include contributions to 529 plans established by other states. Questions, comments? Tom? Anything?
Well, I found it interesting, well, all of them, but Senate Bill 102 regarding dyslexia screening program. Do we do that now? Do we do that?
We don't screen specifically for that.
Have we identified that occurring?
And I would point out, too, that the research on dyslexia adds to the confusion because the neurological definition is totally different from how it's defined when you're screening preschool kids in education. So that needs to be fleshed out, especially for parents. You know, educationally dyslexically just means the child's having trouble reading. And then if they reverse their letters, writing is dysgraphia, and it goes on and on and on. I had a friend in high school that was diagnosed and went to the special, I think Orton-Millingham School in New York.
Thank you. It's an interesting topic to me.
It's been a busy couple of months.
Thank you, Mary. Mrs. Bryner? Who is screening to do the chief financial officers' report recommendations? Anyone? No?
All right.
Moving on. It's recommended financial statements. It's recommended the financial statements for March 2019 be accepted and placed on file for audit. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mrs. Bryner?
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
And Ms. Spriner?
Yes.
We can do all, A through F.
Yeah, we usually combine them all.
Dan usually combined, no, I missed that. So, it's recommended the sections B through F, in accordance with 135.15 of the Ohio Revised Code, be ratified.
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mrs. Bryner?
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
And Ms. Spriner?
Yes.
Do we have any unfinished business to conduct? Cover.
Nope.
None? New business? Hearing of the public? And there will be no executive session? We have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll, Mrs. Bryner?
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Ms. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Tuttle?
Yes.
And Ms. Spriner?
Yes.